Thank you Sheriff, and we'd like to start with Pastor Ron Fuller for our invocation please.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we praise you and we worship you that you've given us such a special precious place to live. You've given us people to govern, to look out for us, to care for our communities, our county and our cities, and we thank you for that Father. We ask for your guidance in this meeting tonight, that the work done here would be work for you, the way you want your people cared for, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Morse, would you lead us in pledge? Thank you. And roll call. Seventeen present. Seventeen present, Commissioner Hobbs is, we have, yeah, we have more than that. Sixteen present. Thank you, okay. First order of business will be to approve today's agenda. Does anybody have any changes or concerns about the agenda? Seeing none, we'll vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Sixteen ayes, thank you ma'am. Agenda is approved. This time, as with every meeting, we'll open the floor to any public comments. Anything that is germane to the county and county business is, you're welcome to speak. Up to two minutes per person, would anybody like to address the commission? And it also bears noting that all of our individual committee meetings now, we intend to have a public comment process also, more so than just this. All right. Mr. Trustee, would you like to, I think it's good news about our investments. We'd love to hear those because half of us did hear it, the other half did not.
I'd just like to say we've been very blessed this year on our investment performance. Did you have anything specific that you want me to?
Well, I think just the million dollars you referenced in interest income that you've been able to, you know, the increase in interest income that you've worked hard to.
Well, last year our interest income was not what we would like to have seen. I think everybody was aware of interest rates last year and we have aggressively looked at monies coming into the county and we have aggressively invested those monies. We projected what the obligations are and this year we went from three hundred thousand, roughly three hundred thousand last year to nine hundred and sixty thousand this year. And I think it relates to our banking partners here in Coffee County. A lot of the banks have stepped up and they've played a very important role. I think a lot of it is the other fee offices that have turned their fees in. I think they've worked to get their fees to our office so that we can get those invested. And we've been very, very fortunate this year.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And continues to help our county in a great way. Any additional public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move to number seven on the agenda, which is the approval, the review and approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Can entertain, we do have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor for approval of the minutes signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Carries by fifteen, thank you very much. The item number eight is resolutions of memorial, sympathy, proclamations and commendations. We have several here. Perhaps we could entertain a motion to vote on them at once. I do want to speak about each one briefly first, as a group. Well, first, can I entertain a motion and a second to combine them? Thank you. So we do have a motion and a second to combine the proclamations. Yes, ma'am, thank you. So I'd like to, because all these are very noteworthy, so I do want to make sure we mention those. May twenty-fifth was Mrs. Opal Casey Day and celebrating a hundred and two years of life, which was amazing. I got to visit with her. Another is the Coffee County Rescue Squad's sixtieth anniversary. We all know how much they contribute to our county. Absolutely. Very proud of those. Eight C, it was a proclamation to commemorate June first as Chief Deputy Frank C.B. Watkins Day. We had a great time here celebrating his thirtieth anniversary and he's still a young man, so he's pretty cool. We're proud of Frank and very much so. Next is an amateur radio proclamation. I will go out to the field and present that to them on June the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. They'll be having practical radio exercises on the grounds of Old Stone Fort State Park and it's very helpful for them to be involved in local government when they do that. And then we have a proclamation to commemorate June second as Mr. Tommy Gwenday. Commissioner Duncan was kind enough to make sure we did not overlook that. Gentleman was wounded forty, twenty-four times in two wars, twelve Purple Hearts, survived three POWs episodes, escaped each time. It's a pretty remarkable individual and really enjoyed that. And then Manchester VFW Post one zero nine zero four wins the first place for community service in Tennessee for the second consecutive year. That post continues, it's a little post that could, it continues to turn out extraordinary and remarkable outcomes for such a small post and we appreciate everything they do. And we'll talk a little bit about how you can help the veterans here at the end of the meeting throughout this month of June also. But that is the proclamations that we're putting together. Several of them have already been presented, but we're going to codify them today and we have a motion and a second to vote on those. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye and those opposed vote no.
I think we have to fix the method. We're already on nine A on our wireless devices.
I'm sorry, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, that's close enough. We'll vote, signify by voting aye and those opposed vote no on putting those together and approving them. Motion carries, thank you very much. Next is nine, the elections appointments and confirmations. We have a opening for the rural resident of the Coffee County Industrial Board and in consultation with the executive director and the director, we're proposing Scott Hansert be placed on the industrial board. And we have a motion and a second on his placement on the board. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. Those in favor, Scott Hansert being appointed to the Coffee County Industrial Board signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to number ten, which is unfinished business. Now, the first is a health department construction status and I think Commissioner Hunt, I would recognize you for that update, please.
We have made some progress. The ARPA funds went handed down to state and local authorities. There were rules put in place and there were changes to rules and there were final rules. What meant, the final rules meant for right now. They might change again. Right now, we're going through a review process for the method in which we chose our architectural firm. Also, that architectural firm has already acquired a proposal from the, to do the civil, what would you call that? The grounds and?
The boring and the, yes, they're just, well, they're, yeah.
Yeah, site prep.
Site prep, that's good.
But anyway, he's took a quote for sixty-five hundred dollars. It's not like building a chicken house in your backyard. We gotta do things pretty technical. So he's already acquired a quote for that, but we are waiting on some reviews, but we are moving forward.
Yes, we're, but anytime you combine federal and state money, it's a morass. That's just the bottom line. Moving on, committee vacancy appointments. We have none to discuss tonight. Grant approvals, there are none on the agenda. Leads us to the meat and potatoes of while we're here, which is the 2024 budget discussions, anybody that has any. We've, you have a budget before you, everybody should have one. I think it was provided to you a week or so ago also after the last budget and finance meeting. And I'd like to recognize Mariana here at the start for any comments that she might have for the macro aspects of the budget.
I did put another copy at your seats and it matches the one that was sent out online earlier in the week. If anybody would like a copy, additional copy, please see me after the meeting. I just want to say we did, we were able to make some additional contributions to some organizations that really needed those and they help our community and enhance our quality of life. Our fund balance is estimated at close to eight million dollars. The mayor has a minimum of four percent for all employees in the budget. We do have twenty million dollars worth of approved capital projects, both ongoing and several that will be started in the next few months. So that's, that's good for our county and the big one is the one Mr. Commissioner Hunt spoke of, the new health department. We did move increased sales tax into our rural solidway sanitation fund so that we could adequately raise salaries for our convenience center workers in our part time. So we have a, hopefully our final budget meeting will be next Tuesday at five o'clock. We'll wrap all this up with some minor details to iron out. Other than that, that's my comments.
Well, thank you. I'm sure we might have some, some questions obviously, and if not tonight, you can bring them Tuesday again. And everybody obviously is welcome to every one of those meetings to speak and bring your concerns. We did look at a lot of the very low-paid individuals that we had and tried to bring everybody up to something that was closer to what we consider a little bit better standard of living. We had some corrections we made in some employees and we're trying to obviously create an environment where our county employees will stay here longer and longer. So we'd like to do more than four percent raise if our budget holds. I think this commission, I hope this commission and other budget committees willing to look at another one-time bonus or performance pay or some type in November and when we're halfway through the budget. Some of our nonprofit appropriations are going to be broken into two parts also, where the first part is the first part of the fiscal year and the budget committee will come back together six months through the year to just make sure that our funds are holding together for the second half of those contributions. They're all very small in comparison to a lot of other numbers, about five thousand dollars apiece. But we do want to continue to provide raises. My office is working very hard on a new insurance plan for employees. We're going to maintain the state system and our Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage, but we're looking at some other avenues and getting very deep in the weeds with it on ways we can increase take-home pay and increase our insurance benefits at the same time. We've got some pretty cool things we're working on. Probably the hallmark is putting a clinic in this building eventually for government employees and their dependents. Of course, this commission will ultimately approve that once we can put the pro forma, the numbers before them, but there's, there's a lot of things going on. We're juggling, moving a lot of things forward and I appreciate the work the budget committee's put in. We've had great attendance at all the meetings and I think it's been helpful having additional commissioners involved and additional perspectives involved. So with that preamble, we'll open it up to any points of discussion anybody may have at this point. And like I said, if, if not, we've, my office has, will remain open for any concerns if you have them and we'll see you at the next budget and finance meeting if you want to bring anything else in. But if we don't see any additional discussions now, then we will move on to number eleven, which is new business and there's changes to personnel manuals, which I don't believe we have any today, and accounting approvals. We have some budget amendments. The first one is eleven B I. I'll let the system catch up. It's not moving fast. How we doing, Mr. Formaterian? Everything holding together. First is a school board budget amendment that you have in your packet and we have a motion and a second on that amendment. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you ma'am. Next is eleven B I I, double I. It's the General Capital Projects Fund, which you have your amendment in your packet and we have a motion and a second on, and do we have any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, prepare to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries, unanimous, thank you. Next is eleven B I I I, triple I. It's Rural Capital Projects Fund. It's amendment number one seven one dash twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. Rural Capital Projects, entertain a motion, we have, and a second, it's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of the Rural Capital Projects Fund, signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you. Next is the Highway Public Works Fund. It's eleven B four and amendment number one three one dash twenty twenty-three twenty. We have a motion and a second, it's properly before us. Do we have any discussion on the Highway Public Works Fund? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you. And the final is eleven B five. It's Ambulance Service Fund, number one eighteen twenty twenty-three twenty-one. Motion's before us, properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Thank you, motion carries. And the final will be eleven B subsection E, which is our list of notaries and entertain a motion and a second on our notaries, which we have. The motion's properly before us, although, is there any discussion on our notaries? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Thank you, motion carries. Before we move on to reports for committees, I'd just like to say that the good work the committees are doing reflects in these meetings and I appreciate that. You guys have done your homework. You've not been afraid to ask questions and that's why these meetings move smoothly and I appreciate that very much. Committees are working hard. Going to the reports for committees. Now twelve A, Budget and Finance. Chairman Seaborn.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, we've already talked about the budget you have in front of you tonight. I would encourage you to look through that if you're not on the committee and not familiar with what's in it. At least you ought to be familiar with it. Come next Tuesday if you've got questions or call me if you've got questions or send me an email, send Mariana an email. And I just wanted to thank Mariana once again for all the work she does because she's printed lots and lots of copies of this thing as we fool around with it throughout the, throughout the spring. So appreciate everybody's work on the committee.
Her entire office and the committee and department heads have all pulled together. It's been enlightening. HWR, Chairman Holmsworth.
Yes, we'll be meeting June twenty-sixth. If we have some, we have some contracts coming up. If those contracts come in, we'll meet the twenty-sixth. If not, we will push that on to July. I'd also like to recognize Commissioner Smith for some minutes, please.
One of the things that had been brought to our attention is the school zone is not, there's no lights behind North Coffee Elementary and several residents are asking there be signs put up. And so we did discuss that. Don't know where that will lead, but there's a lack of sight back behind the school. There's people coming out of the school, school buses, parents dropping kids off, picking up. So that's going to be something we talk about.
Yes, and it's, it is a potential danger zone back there. Thank you. Law Enforcement Committee, Chairman DeFord.
We had a meeting this, last Thursday. We did a tour of the jail, the law enforcement committee. I was very impressed with how clean and efficient the jail was running and we also got to see a new piece of equipment that was very much needed that they obtained a few weeks ago.
Excellent. And there's a possibility you may be calling a special meeting.
Yes, and then we have a special called meeting. I'll have to set the date probably next week and we'll send it out for the public notice.
And one of the items at least on that should be a new judicial commissioner hire. And for those of you that don't know the process, my office and Mr. Kruger, Judicial Commissioner, we do the interviews. We refer them to the law enforcement committee. They make sure that they have the background and acumen needed for the job, then they recommend them to the full commission. That's the process for now. So we'd like to have that, we have a person picked out. We'd like to have them approved on the twenty-seventh meeting if at all possible. So we want the law enforcement committee to be able to, to do their job. So thank you, Chairman. Beer Board had no activity. Capital Outlay, Chairman Hunt.
Our last meeting was June the first. Representative from the Coffee County Manchester Locations Library was present to request painting a mural on the side of that building. We did approve that. Also, like a nature area on a vacant property behind the library, which we approved that as well. There was a, the operating manager of the Manchester Conference Center was present to propose Coffee County help in capital improvement, improvements on the conference center. A lot of people don't realize when we, when Coffee County and Manchester City operated it as a team for years and years, Coffee County opted out a few years ago, but we still own fifty percent of the real property. So it's, it was in our opinion, as a capital outlay committee, we, we take care of maintenance, repairs on all structures that Coffee County owns. If we own fifty percent of that, we feel like we should pay our half to repair the building. We're not putting money in the operating expenses. There was an article put in a publication, a newspaper that might be slightly misleading. It said county committee commits to funding conference center repairs. If you read the whole body of the article, you do get the meat and potatoes of what we actually did. There were stipulations. We had the document which lays out the agreement between Manchester and Coffee County, the one where we got out of it basically. There's language in there that was concerning us that our county attorney has reviewed. He feels like the language of that agreement would let us move forward with funding capital improvements. What I do want to clarify is capital outlay committee does not commit funds. We only make recommendations. Budget and finance will be the next place that this expenditure will be reviewed. At that point, we may or may not commit to it at the budget and finance level. There's one more stipulation. We cannot pay any maintenance, capital improvement funds on this building if the city of Manchester does not match like kind. We're fifty fifty in this building. So that's, that's a stipulation. The attorney had to review it. He was good with it. That's Ed North, our county attorney. Budget and finance has to approve the funds. Then Manchester City has to come on board as well. So I just wanted to clarify that. Also, Rick's report, that's our maintenance director, he brought some pretty interesting information on our roof on this building. We are going forward with some repairs that should give us more life without doing a complete tear-off. So we are going to work on this. Also, the train people has completed their survey. If everybody remembers, it's, it's a little bit complicated to dissect, but just to, just to condense it for you. They guaranteed so much savings. We spent the money we saved. They guaranteed it'd pay us back in the savings. If you go through all the tables and spreadsheets that they provided, it is doing that. So we were real happy with the train report for the first full year audit of having all of these savings in place. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That committee's been very busy. Policies and procedures, Chairman Hirschman.
Well, we, our next meeting, I guess, is on the twenty-sixth of this month. I know we have several policies that have been handed to the legislative bodies or the committees so they can review and hopefully we'll be getting some word back on those. We've asked all the heads of the departments to meet with us on our next meeting on the twenty-sixth to discuss probation period on new hires, to get their feel. I know everybody has some different ideas on it and we'd like to get their ideas from them. So we're moving forward with quite a few things.
Very good, thank you. Industrial Board, do we have anything? Mr. Krupp?
Thank you.
Thank you. He's doing great work and, and moving forward on, on a lot of, of potential. Strategic planning, Chairman Seaborn.
Yeah, I just want to mention a couple of things with strategic planning. We've been having a lot of meetings for over a year now or right at, coming up on a year, I guess, around a year. The last meeting we had a few weeks ago, and it's in the minutes are in your package, I would encourage you to review them. We did, we've been meeting with stakeholders and we've pretty much finished meeting with stakeholders. So, we're trying to get on with the writing process now. So, we did what's called a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Kind of helps you look at your organization from every possible angle. And so, we have a list of the, of the ones I capture at least. And if any of the other members caught or anybody captured anything additional, we'll add it. But I encourage you to look at that. And if it prompts you to think of anything else you see about our county that you would like to make an input to the committee, I would encourage you to do that. This next, this coming Thursday, we'll be meeting. And the goal there is to start writing out a list of goals and recommendations that we want to put in the plan. There's a lot of changes going on in Coffey County and there's a lot of growth headed our way with jobs and population. And you all have seen, you know, the impact on our real estate prices. And so, we got to start thinking really carefully. We won't get it right in a plan like this. We'll, we'll make some recommendations. But the goal of this really, as much as anything, is to get us to stop and think about what's going on and try to be smart about what we do next year and the next three or four years. So, I would encourage you to look at that and give us any feedback. We're, we're trying to get to the writing phase of this thing and get a plan in front of you you can consider and approve.
Thank you. We can't have enough due diligence to prepare for what's coming. We're still going to get all kinds of fastballs that we never see coming. But the amount of, the intricacy of the amount of things that are going on in all this growth is, is pretty mind-boggling. And if you just ride to a different part of the county every three months, you'll, you know what we're talking about. We've got good people working on it. Planning Commission, Chairman Hunt.
Correction, I'm secretary, not chairman.
Well, you're, you're chairman of this commission, not district.
The Coffey County Regional Planning Commission has only one commissioner on it at this time. That's myself, and I serve as secretary on that. At our last meeting, we did a couple routine plat approvals, but we did approve unanimously a, an amendment to our zoning resolution that's going to take out some rather counterintuitive setback requirements that only Coffey County has. So, we'll be addressing that. I should have a whole lot more to say about that. I'm sure you're looking forward to that at our next meeting. That's it.
Thank you. And, and I'll recognize you on BZA also next time for anything you might have. Okay, thank you. Purchasing Property Sales Committee, Chairman Hollensworth.
Yes, we'll be meeting this Thursday night, the 15th, at 4:00 PM. And I'd like to defer over to Secretary Watkins for the minutes, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollensworth. At our last meeting on May 16th, we declared the 4.34 tract of land located behind Manchester City Shop is surplus and asked that that be turned over for the mayor for just, opened to discussion to a municipal or governmental entity for that. I believe we're waiting on word from Manchester for a possible agreement. We declared approximately 219 seized surplus and confiscated weapons for surplus to be sold and traded in for equipment for the sheriff's office. And then also Hickerson Station advised that they wanted to look into erecting a memorial at the Hickerson Station Fire Department for Paul Hogan for his lifelong commitment to the department. And I believe Stephanie Bush has looked into that and I believe that's in the works of being done.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
Ambulance Authority, Chairman Stubblefield.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we, we took a tour of the Manchester Station and to address some of the needs that they have at that station. And conclusion, it's a very needy station. It does need some things to be addressed there. So, we're going to talk it over with Rick and he's going to get with the capital outlay and go over some of those needs and, and get back with us. We're going to move on from there. Other than that, nothing to report. Our next meeting will be 6:15.
Yes, sir. Exit 105 joint committee had no activity. Our investment committee had no activity. Solid Waste and Sanitation, Chairman Hunt.
Due to lack of business, we did not have a meeting this month. Our meetings are always the first Wednesday, 10:00 AM at the Rural Solid Waste Facility.
Legislative Committee, Chairman Morse.
Our next meeting will be the 19th. We have some items from HR and possibly some others that we'll be reviewing before our next full commission meeting.
Thank you. Rural Roads and Bridges, no activity. IT Committee, no activity. Non-on-One Board, Chairman Stubblefield.
Nothing to report. Our next meeting will be next Wednesday, 6:21.
The Audit Committee had no activity. EMA Homeland Security had no activity. Wayside Wastewater Authority, their minutes are in your, your packet. Library Board had no activity. Election Commission's next meeting will be on the 13th today. And the County Board of Equalization, I swore them in first on June the 1st, and they had their first meeting. And that gets us through our committee updates. And now we'll go to number 13, which is statements and announcements. First one I'd like to make is of our next meeting, which will be June 23rd, 2023, 6:00 PM here. And of course, you'll be receiving notices about that. Also, I mentioned at the beginning that, talk about ways that you could help veterans throughout the month of June, where you could help them all year. But throughout the month of June, Hardee's in Manchester has several fundraisers to include live auctions and other types of fundraisers. And they are accepting auction items. You could go buy at Manchester Hardee's. They're also accepting cash donations, which will go directly to the veterans organizations here. And the checks would need to be made out to Hardee's in Manchester. Go in there and see the manager. You could see myself or Commissioner Brown also. You could bring the donations to us and we can take them to them. And I'd like to recognize Commissioner Brown quickly on that.
I want to start out with $100 charity, because it's a great charity. And I want to ask all the commissioners, the licensed officials, to help out.
Thank you. And very much so. So, it's a challenge. Anybody can, can help out. And once again, auction items. If you have something cool or your business can donate something that you think they could raise some money in the auction, that would be very helpful. You could drop it off to them also. Do we have any additional statements or announcements?
I'd like to personally thank the mayor for showing up at Mr. Gwynn's 104th birthday party. There was a little party put on by his church. I wasn't sure of how everything was going to go down or just how it was going to be. The VA hospital showed up last, the last time. And, but with the mayor showing up, it made it a real special occasion and read the proclamation from the county. And thank you, sir, for that.
Well, sure. And you were there to represent City Telom and City Manchester also with proclamations by the two respective mayors. And that was a very deserved event. So, thank you for including me. And anybody here that ever wants to go with us to give any resolutions or if you have somebody in your community that needs to be honored for, for an achievement, special birthday, long anniversary or something, just let us know. We'll take care of that. Any additional statements or announcements?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hunt.
I'd like to remind everybody, this week, Commissioner Terry Hirschman and myself, now representing our district, almost 200,000 people because Bonnaroo does lie within our district. Everybody remember that the traffic is terrible. You know, stay calm, take the back roads. We always get through it. So, be careful.
Thank you. That's good advice. Mr. Pettigo, we, we good to go? Meeting's tight. Can I entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn? So moved, we are adjourned.